I saw her, I saw her at Brookshire.
Had a couple of calling to complain describing as the rather giant off. He's a big, he's a big guy. Always, always wanted to be six-ten, that was my goal.
I'll now call the word of this meeting of the City of White House Council for today, January the twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-five, it is six P M. Ms. Hargis, could you please call the roll?
James Wonsley.
Here.
Zach Crisco.
Here.
Franzel Burns.
Here.
John Chambers. Michael Lowe.
Here.
And Matt Lazare.
Here.
We have Coram.
Excellent. Please stand if you're able and join Councilwoman Burns as she leads us in a word of prayer.
Father God, we thank you for today. We thank you for your many blessings, God. We thank you for your darling son, Jesus. God, we thank you for the opportunity just to come together and be about the business that you've entrusted us with. God, we ask that you continue to bless us individually and collectively. I ask these things in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join the council in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
On my Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Sounds pretty good. Please be seated. Alright, that takes us to item D, presentations. We have royalty in the room. Cindy Nix Hendricks, daughter of Coach C L Nix, and Olivia Neal's granddaughter of Coach C L Nix are here. We had a proclamation reading at the Friday night football game between the girls' basketball and the boys' basketball that included some of the players from some of the teams that played under Coach Nix and all the glory that they achieved. We read that proclamation. We received a video from our congressman and some kind words from the past superintendent, Dr. Chris Moran, who actually played under Coach Nix himself. So this is the proclamation. Whereas Coach C L Nix dedicated thirty years of his life to shaping the lives of young athletes and fostering a culture of excellence at White House High School. And whereas Coach Nix began his illustrious coaching career at then-two-way White House High School in the fall of nineteen fifty-seven, embarking on a journey that would leave an indelible mark on the Texas high school basketball. And whereas during his tenure, Coach Nix led White House High School basketball program to an unprecedented success, amassing an extraordinary record of seven hundred and fourteen wins and only two hundred and thirty-five losses. And whereas, under Coach Nix's guidance, White House High School teams achieved twenty or more victories in twenty-six out of thirty seasons, demonstrating consistent excellence and dedication. And whereas Coach Nix's teams would have qualified for postseason play in all thirty seasons under today's rules, showcasing the enduring quality of his coaching. And whereas Coach Nix led White House High School to the state tournament three times in nineteen seventy-two, nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen seventy-nine, the founding achievement of winning the state championship in nineteen seventy-eight. Whereas throughout his career, Coach Nix's team secured eighteen district championships, seven by-district championships, three regional championships, and one state championship, building a legacy of success. And whereas, in recognition of this outstanding achievements, Coach Nix was honored as the third-winningest coach in Texas in nineteen eighty-eight. And whereas Coach Nix's impact extended beyond the court, influencing countless lives and instilling values of hard work, perseverance, and sportsmanship in his players. Now, therefore, I, James Wonsley, Mayor of the City of White House, Texas, do hereby proclaim January the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Coach C L Nix Day, in the City of White House, and urge all citizens to join in honoring the legacy of this exceptional coach, mentor, and community leader. What's not in here is last year, Coach Nix was inducted posthumously into the Texas High School Coach Hall of Fame. And that award was given to the family of Coach Nix. And at the ceremony on Friday night, that plaque was handed over to the school district for safekeeping and to serve as a reminder of what hard work and dedication can do to the athletes, to the students, and the coaching staff as well. So, thank you for being here tonight, Nix's family, and we definitely appreciate your legacy. That's a long enough proclamation that my computer turned off. Here we go. Alright, these are items of community interest. Mrs. Black.
Mayor and council, renovations continue down at one oh nine East Main, which will be known as our city center. Right now, our best guess is that those renovations will be complete and that we can open the building sometime around the first week of August. So we're really excited about the progress that's being made. I do know that they have started putting in some sheetrock on the interior walls. And so it's looking more and more like a building down there. In mid-December, we were notified that we did receive an upgraded bond reading from S and P Global. So, it's a great testament to Jennifer's work and all the work of our team and making sure that our finances are in strong working order. And we did release our two thousand and twenty-four annual report at the Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Banquet last week, and it is available on our website. If anybody's interested, I encourage you to go check that out. And I don't know if you all saw today, President Trump has issued a hold on all grants. And so, we aren't aware of any impacts to us just yet. We do have a federal grant in progress right now, or an application in progress. It's the C D B G R C P.
MIT.
MIT grant. It is still in an application process and under review. So, I don't know yet that it'll hold anything up on that side of it. We were a long way from funding anyway. So hopefully, we can continue through the review process. We were hoping to get an R F I, Request for Information, any additional details that they needed to process that by the end of this month. So we'll see if that still comes through on Friday or if that is delayed, but we will keep you posted as we go through that process.
Alright. Anything else from the council, a matter of community interest? Just like to take the opportunity to thank our chamber, White House Chamber, for having an excellent event the other night. That was a great representation of what's going on in the city. That was, uh, well-led and well-managed and well-attended. So, really happy to see what's going on with our city-adjacent organizations like the Chamber. Very proud of them. Alright, that takes us down to item F, public forum. We had one person sign up for public forum, so I'll go through this right quick. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one dot zero-zero-seven, members of the public may speak on an agenda item during the public forum section. Or, at the time the agenda item is called for discussion by the mayor, speakers shall be given three minutes to speak. A speaker needing a translator and/or interpreter may be given six minutes to speak. Criticism of city employees or staff is prohibited. Those wishing to address the council regarding an item not on the agenda must be a citizen, property owner, a business owner in the City of White House. Comments on such non-agenda items shall be limited to three minutes. The council will not comment on items not on the agenda. However, the council may refer the item to city staff or research resolution or referral of the matter to the council as a future agenda item. Mr. DeMarcus Hawkins, please come on up and state your name and address for the record. Let's hear what you got.
Yes, my name is DeMarcus Hawkins. I live at one oh seven Dudes Drive, White House, Texas, seven five seven nine point. I'm back again, as far as the flooding on Dudes Drive. I know the city came and dug the ditch out, and that was okay, but that's not gonna fix the problem. Problem is, we need a drain behind the house between Mr. Wright and my property. I know it's a hole on grants because a friend of mine had the same kind of problem that I had. But there was a natural creep that was behind our house, and it flooded their yard. And the city of Tyler came in with a grant and fixed the problem. No, no hassle. So maybe in the future, if the grants are released or if their hole goes off on the grants, there's something needs to be done. It's been going on for years. I mean, come to city council meetings over and over and over. Something needs to be done. And hopefully, in the near future, it will, something will be done. And I just thank y'all for listening.
Yes, sir. Can we add that as an agenda item to the February meeting? So the public forum, we're not allowed to actually speak back unless we're stating matters of fact or, you know, delegating work to the, to the city staff or putting an item on the agenda. I think it's, it's time that we came together with the work that's going on behind the scenes in this, the history of it. My time on council before I was mayor, we've, we've been discussing this property. So I think it's time to come together and figure out what we can do to move forward on this. So, Mr. Hawkins, if you're available for the February meeting, we'd love to have you here. That was the last person that signed up for public forum. So we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. The section shall provide for items that require action by the council, but where no discussion is anticipated by a single motion, second, and affirmative majority vote, items under this section are approved without further discussion or action. We only have one item on there, and it's approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on December the seventeenth. It's been since New Year's. Hopefully, you guys reread those. Probably don't remember. But if there's nothing that needs to be corrected in those minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. All the consent, the consent.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Alright, with that, the motion carries. That takes us down to item H, other action items, ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. Item number one is discussing consideration and action on reappointments for, one, Planning and Zoning Commission, and B, the Charter Review Commission. Ms. Hargis.
Yes, sir. Mayor, council, before you tonight are appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Charter Review Commission. Miles McCrary has applied for one of the two vacant positions on planning and zoning. Mr. McCrary brings experience from serving on various business boards and volunteer organizations, as well as working with economic development corporations and zoning boards through his professional career. I believe Mr. McCrary is present tonight, if y'all have any questions for him. The Charter Review Commission, a slate of potential members has been identified. Staff has reached out to each one of those, and all have indicated that they would be, that they would like to serve. Staff recommends appointing Cameron Tharp, Franzel Burns, Cassie Hollinshead, Jonathan Bush, and for the I S D, Dr. Casey Whittle, to the two thousand and twenty-five Charter Review Commission. If you do like that slate of names, the motion, the suggested motion in the packet would need to be modified to include Dr. Whittle. I hadn't heard back from him at the time that that was published.
And I'll just, I'll go through the names. You might not recognize some of the names inside of the charter review. So Camry Tharp is somebody that was U T Tyler representative, that provided student, student support labor, basically, to a lot of the stuff that happened in the city. So she's been engaged for quite a while. So she kind of brings a perspective of the post-secondary education. Franzel Burns, new to council, and this is a great way to learn the charter, is to get it there and read every single word of it. Cassie Hollinshead has been on planning and zoning for a long time and does a great job of working with others. It's great to have her. Jonathan Bush is the mayor of the Youth Community Council. He's pretty engaged, so he gives us a youth perspective of what's going in. And then we have the White House I S D administration, so that gives us from the school's perspective as well.
And is Jason Beaton still on the list?
I don't see him.
That shouldn't, that was a mistake.
Okay.
Oh, Jason, oh, is he included or not?
It was on the agenda, so I didn't hear the name when she read it. I didn't hear you just.
That was my mistake of putting it on there.
So he shouldn't be included or should be?
He should not be included. He was not a part of that recommendation. I made a mistake typing the names.
Understood. Alright, so that is your Charter Review Committee or Commission. Any other comments or questions on those appointments?
I think it's great, a good, all-around, good, you know, mixture of people.
We have scheduled a tentative, or we do have a tentative scheduled with the attorney that is leading that effort and anticipate that they will be completing their work before your June council meetings to make sure that that gives you enough time to order the election in July or August for the November ballot.
I think it's a great cross-section of people.
You too.
Me too. That's great. I have no other comments or questions. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Miles McCrary to one unexpired term on the Planning and Zoning Commission and to appoint Camry Tharp, Franzel Burns, Cassie Hollinshead, Jonathan Bush, and the W I S D representative for a six-month term to the Charter Review Commission.
Casey Whittle.
Casey Whittle.
He's the W I S D.
I didn't see the name.
Just added it.
Casey Whittle, also.
Excellent.
I'll second that.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries. Alright, that takes us down to item H two, discussion, consideration, and action on approving the inter-local agreement for computer support services with the City of Tyler. Mrs. Black.
Mayor and council, if you remember from your last meeting, this was an item on the agenda. We have been in the process of kind of redeveloping this contract with the City of Tyler to include the services that we will need at city center and as well as redundant fiber that the city needs. And if you are a member from our last meeting, one of the questions you all had was whether or not we could put some parameters around C P I, a minimum and a maximum. I did want to get a little bit more history on how C P I came to be a part of this contract. So a couple of years ago, we received an updated amount from City of Tyler I T Services. They hadn't passed on an increase in several years, and so we were suddenly facing a twenty percent increase. And so we had actually requested that they add C P I as a part of our contract so that we could better justify any increases in making sure that we were keeping up with that over time. I did send that question back to Vinnie Ostapponi, who's the director of the I T department with the City of Tyler. He is actually sick today, so Brian is with us to help answer any questions you may have.
Alright, do you guys have any questions for Brian? Should he come up?
So, Brian, is there any chance, because we had kind of a similar contract with another company at our last meeting. And we brought up a minimum and a maximum, and then I think we kind of settled on a, just a four percent number. Is there any opportunity with the city, maybe discuss that? I see in the contract, it talks about five percent increases over the next five years, kind of just standard built in there. Is there any room in that number to change it to four?
We talked about this earlier, and we can't go with four. We can still build a bit higher than that, just to meet our, you know, expenses and stuff like that. I know the past, let's say, seven years, C P I on information services is about six, seven percent, and we really haven't done any of those. I think we're right there, about three percent and stuff like that. And the five percent that's mentioned is gonna be your, um, the store security, cybersecurity, stuff like that. And then with the additional C P I coming up. And now, um, we've talked about, you know, kind of lowering the number with the C P I because it's kind of fluctuates and here and there. So, um, do you guys have any proposals on those or?
Well, the way we arrived at the one for, it was actually trash services, was they, we pulled up the C P I of waste services over the last ten years, and the average was four, is where we, is where we got that number from, which was something that was agreeable by our provider. So, you're referencing C P I information. If you, if you can show the work on that, we'd love to see it.
Um, I've just got it written down here. But, uh, my C I O has authorized me, if you guys are, um, for a five percent.
So that would be a five percent cap, like it wouldn't go over five percent?
Uh, yes.
We'd just be five percent.
Flat.
It's a scheduled five percent for the next five years.
With the C P I kind of high, I mean, we kind of like it where, you know, C P I is kind of fair to everybody. It goes up and down, but I know it's kind of hard for planning and stuff like that. So, if you guys are amenable to the five percent, I think it'll be, it'll be okay with that.
I know there's, so there's vehicle insurance, stuff to cover up, to account for on the waste management side. And I know in our technology area, cybersecurity insurance has doubled the last two years in a row. It's really hard to.
Not pass that cost on.
Yeah, it's really hard to absorb that.
You know, we're seeing three to five percent.
Our C P I insurance is separate from the contract that we're talking about. Our cybersecurity insurance is separate than our contract.
Oh, that's not included in our contract? Okay. So it is basically just a regular C P I.
Right. Now, they have their own insurance that would all, probably because we're connected in some ways would.
I'm sure we're a line item on there somewhere, yeah.
I'll have to check on the bad ending, so.
But you were about to mention your vendor costs?
Well, our vendor costs kind of differs from five, you know, three to five percent, just depends who they are. And then like some of them just jump to like thirty-five percent. So like VMware, if they jump, I don't know, four hundred percent. So it's, it's kind of, the price on there kind of just fluctuates.
And I, you know, I get C P I's been high the last few years, but I've also seen negative C P I's. So, you know, four to me is more the middle ground.
I think for, um,
I agree.
For this year, it went down back to like, it was like a seven, I'm looking, I'm saying like seven eleven. So for this year, it kind of went down back to six, so. I think it just, you know, a lot of the cost is, you know.
What, what month is the increase based on? You pick a certain month out of the year? I haven't read.
No, it's like a year average.
Year average.
For like two thousand and twenty-four, we got like six point seven.
And they use the Dallas Federal Reserve?
So this, this one's a separate one. This is a technology, you know, C P I. We also have the, um, just the Dallas Reserve, let me see the name.
Dallas Federal Reserve.
Yeah. Federal Reserve Bank of Dallas, Texas Economic Indicators. That's where we came. It was actually about four point nine five. So I'm just citing the, um, C P I for information and technology, but we're basing it on the, the whole thing.
So I guess as consumers, but also as a city council member, I understand costs are going up. Looking at a contract where we have a guarantee that's gonna go up five percent every year, just kind of makes you wonder, because like if we go in a recession, we have a off year, and costs go down, and we're still paying that five percent.
Yeah, and so that's where we kind of propose the C P I, because if it goes down, then our rates go down.
So that would be tracking to the C P I as opposed to a steady five percent year over year? It does, it makes it harder to budget if we're tied to the C P I?
So, so I guess that's the question, whether or not we want to do a locked-in five percent or in this instance, actually go about the C P I with no cap.
And it's a five-year deal? Yeah.
It looks like that. Go ahead, Mayor.
Without, I mean, if we're gonna do a locked-in rate, it would be good to have data that kind of shows how we reached that average over the five years so that we, we don't lock in a rate that's beyond what we should be paying. Right. I see C P I going down over the next few years. It's one of the few opportunities, as council, we get to speculate.
Yeah.
Are you able to provide the information?
Yeah, we can give that to you.
Well, I guess pending that information, I'd have a motion to table this.
Right.
Do we have further information?
Do we have time? We have time, Mrs. Black, for this contract?
I think so. I mean, we've, we've paid, um, I know we've paid a portion of the contract. I think we just haven't paid for what's new, so.
Okay.
Because we are, you know, several months into the year, so I think we, we just haven't added the new, yeah, the new rates or the changes, so.
Do you think you could have this by our February meeting?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll go one way. We're just trying to figure out which one, so.
Yeah.
We've, uh, we've, we've really enjoyed, I hear it from the staff, the City of Tyler does a great job providing service to us, and it's a partnership that we really appreciate.
Thank you, and that's good to hear.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, can I add a?
Yes, yes, please.
And I would say we probably get maybe better service than City of Tyler employees, so, uh, I can say that. We're in White House. They are very, very responsive to our requests. And, you know, we have a lot of requests. Councilmember Lazare, you know, with the amount of video that just is in an officer's car these days, a lot of data and a lot of moving parts. And so we really appreciate their efforts and their willingness to work with us through this process that can't be overstated enough. So we really appreciate all that they do, even when I call them with silly problems, they are on it and fixing it.
If y'all use them as much as I use my county I T, they stay pretty busy.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you, Brian. I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Heard Zach first. Uh, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, we have a tabled motion. A rare thing here, but there you go. Alright, so the next item is number H three, discussion, consideration, and action on updating municipal maintenance agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation, TexDOT. Mrs. Black.
Mayor and council, we do have a municipal maintenance agreement with TexDOT. We have for quite some time. They have done some updates to their agreements, and I'm happy to say that the updates, I think, are favorable for the City of White House. These agreements just really define who's responsible for what along TexDOT roadways and riceway. And this one in particular provides a little bit clarity and confirmation that TexDOT does a little bit more with stormwater than maybe we had thought in the past. My experience has been between different districts across the state, there are different levels that TexDOT has maintained and approved stormwater, in particular, in their riceways. This really defines that within their riceways, they are maintaining stormwater. And we have a great working relationship with TexDOT and really appreciate the work that they have done and continue to do, especially along Highway one-ten, to help us mitigate that redundant flooding problem that we have up there. So, um, staff is recommending approval on this.
Next two days, it's gonna get tested.
Yes.
I appreciate the slides at the end of the forty-page document that said what changed. I wish they would have been ahead of them. I got done, I'm like, you gotta.
That was a test to see if you got to the end.
Yeah.
Just to see how well you wanted to read it.
That was a, that was a hearty bit of information there. But it does do a great job of outlining where the, where the lines are for responsibility. And of course, we're, we're great partners with TexDOT, same thing with the county. There's several times when we're all three together, just sharing equipment and resources, so.
They've done a good job on the flooding situation. It's gotten a lot better.
They've done what they can for a property that's in a flood zone. It will never not flood.
You can always go deeper.
Wondered all the work with the pipeline.
A lot of people have it downstream, so you've got to.
I just wondered if all the work with that pipeline has helped that, or will that exacerbate it?
It's introduced more water onto the street.
Yeah.
So instead of dissipating back behind the swampy area where it was, they basically created a path of least resistance. They brought it out onto the road.
I was wondering how that would go.
So it's not fantastic.
No, I will say though, we did go to TexDOT with an issue, that temporary culvert that they have on one of the entrances after the first big rain, the northern side of it had kind of popped up, and so we let TexDOT know, they were, they got them to get that corrected just as quickly as possible. So, we appreciate their help in addressing what we can in that area.
Yeah, those properties are in a flood plain. They are required to carry flood insurance because they are designated as such. Alright, so we have, uh, a municipal agreement, so I'll entertain, any questions or comments on the agreement? I'll entertain a motion. I'll make the motion to approve an updated municipal maintenance agreement with Tex, Texas Department of Transportation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries. Onto item H four, discussion, consideration, and action on amending the city council rules of procedure regarding public forum. Did you want to start us off, Ms. Black, or?
It doesn't matter.
Alright. So, uh, some of the extended training we do as council and city staff as we attend sessions where subject matter experts come in and talk about different things that are just a part of our normal day life. And one of the sessions that we attended was related to Roberts Rules and public, and public meetings. And, and one of the topics they got into was the topic of, uh, public forum. There are a lot of cities in Texas, cities our size, that are facing a lot of problems because they have a public forum section on their agenda. And the public forum section is supposed to be there so that citizens can come in and, uh, express concerns before the council. Half of which we experience here are, unlike other cities, half of them are, you know, thank you for what your police is doing, along with, uh, concerns that are just kind of continuing concerns. But what it opens us up to, that I wasn't aware until I went to this session, is that the restrictions that we put on public forum, whereas you can't attack the staff, you have to maintain the rules of decorum. The time limit we can enforce, but there is no subject that is off limits for them to discuss or bring up outside of yelling fire, you know, in a crowded building. But there is no subject that is off limits for them to discuss or bring up outside of yelling fire, you know, in a crowded building. And the guy running the demonstration did a great job, he showed something ludicrous and obscene on the screen and said, is this something that could be allowed in public forum? We were like, no, he's like, wrong. There's, you know, uh, state, there's a, there's legal action that's already been taken on this, and it was proved to be. It's basically freedom of speech is covered under there because it is a public forum, it's just how it's described on the on the meeting. So, before we get into a position where we have bad actors, somebody that's coming in here and platforming, you know, they've got a TikTok channel. Or they've got something that they just want to come in here and cause a scene, try to get a reaction out of us. Try to get them removed unlawfully because they're expressing their freedom of speech, and we get sued as a city because of that action. Um, I thought it was a good time to consider uh, taking this part of the agenda away for future meetings. And if you look in the email, and I think I'm speaking for all city council members, we have a one hundred percent response rate. If we get an email from a citizen, that e- that citizen gets a response. Oftentimes, those items turn into agenda items that we discuss here in the meeting. If it's a public forum conversation, it's one way, they give information to us, we can't really reply. If it's an agenda item, it creates a dialogue where we can speak back and forth on what the issue is, how to best resolve it. And what to do to move forward. I think it just gives us a lot more latitude for addressing issues that come up, and it takes away uh, the issues that that may arise. For keeping a public forum there with knowing now that there's really nothing that we can restrict that can be said or done outside of causing damage to. People in the room and property, uh, what can be put on display in a in a public forum meeting. So that's where we're, that's where I'm coming from with it, and I open it up to discussion. So one question for me, and I'm not necessarily against it at all, but who decides if a if a somebody from the public has a legitimate concern? It needs to be a an agenda item? That comes in through the council, and it comes in through me or the city staff? Seek out a council member. Absolutely, yeah.
I I've seen this firsthand, unfortunately, and it opens us up to a lot of liabilities and uh, reaction and stuff. And it's not productive either to what we're here to do, uh, which is to further the city's business, so I I agree with this idea.
So there wouldn't probably be any litigation down the road, um, forcing us to have a public forum? That would never come up.
I think, I mean, whatever council is in place at the time can choose to bring it back.
Alright.
But uh, in in my estimation, the landscape has changed. There was a time when people would come up and and kind of hold themselves accountable for what they do and what they say here. You know, knowing that the community is watching, but we have kids in the room, you know, we have uh, we have a youth community council that's here sometimes. We have, uh, we're broadcast on uh, YouTube, this is us as a city, the comments that are that that are made here. Are comments that are made uh, to the staff that's required to be here as well, so. Putting your staff in a position where they can basically be open openly abused and they have no choice but to be here. It just seems like a, it just seems like a bad idea, not now, of course, not, like I'm saying, not now, the best time to plant a tree is ten years ago. And the best time uh, to I think remove something that could be problematic is before it's problematic, and that's where I'm coming from here.
And Councilmember Lou, we have discussed this with our attorney, so the current state law is that you have to allow public comment on items on your agenda. Before you consider and take a vote on that, that would continue, um, and so this does meet current state law. If state law changes, we would certainly bring that information.
What about federal law? I'm just asking.
There's no federal law regarding.
Bringing my speech?
For local government, that's up to state law.
Okay, okay.
But the state law has to comply with the First Amendment, so obviously, it's been vetted.
Yeah, of course, if there's anything implemented at the state or federal level, we would, we would just implement it.
I applaud you guys for doing this, cause I think it's high time. Um, because it's all over the internet, all over the internet, everywhere, so.
I don't think it's anything, I don't think it's something any of us take lightly, right, like we're in this business because we want to hear from our citizens. And make sure we're serving our community and addressing their concerns, but we want to make sure we're doing it in a productive way that is meaningful for our entire community.
I think the council that we have now is is great, and if you think about. What what might happen if the council that's here is replaced by people that don't really care about what the citizens think, I don't know how they got elected, but they're here. Um, those are the same council members that would shut people down when they started getting feedback. And would wind up getting the city sued because because they did exactly that, so I can't think of a path forward where. There would be bad actors in our seats, or bad actors in the community, where having this in place would still be beneficial.
Where even a well-intended situation could result in civil liability, so.
It's kind of what we do as council, is just try to, try to make sure that we're behaving at all times, so that we can do the good things. And not, you know, not face litigation when things go sideways. Anything to add, Mrs. Black? Alright.
So I'd make a motion to approve men in the city council rules of procedure regarding public forum as stated.
I will say, your current council rules of procedure require that you consider this at two meetings, so you cannot approve. You can take, you do need to make a motion and second and a vote to move it forwards. I just wanted to clarify that it will be under your next.
To move it forward to the next meeting, the final vote.
Uh, so that is the motion to move it forward, uh, have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? With that, we're moving that one forward. Alright, that takes us to item five, considered future agenda items, we've already made one recommendation during public forum. Anything else to add to the February council meeting?
Maybe, I'm sorry, maybe we could get an update on the White House wooden sign. Just to, just to, just get an update, you know. I mean, I miss it, it's kind of a fixture.
I do know that uh, Keith Whitehouse Beautiful is also planning to be at your February meeting to present what all they accomplished in twenty twenty-four and what their plans are. For this year as requested uh, the last time they were here, so they plan to be here the next.
Excellent. Anything else in February, late February? Alright, that brings us down to item I one, receive reports from staff, we're starting with our December report.
I always love to look at these reports. I don't know, I just, it it it's neat.
Did you already click on it, Mrs. Black?
Oh, yes, late.
Cause the reports are good.
I thought Brian left already, and our internet's not fine.
We didn't approve the contract, so we shut off our servers.
Alright, property tax revenue, oh, yeah, we're just starting in twenty twenty-five?
Uh, yeah, so it'll show the screen for December.
So that's the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five year?
Yeah, finance is a little bit different. Um, so hers are fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the others are calendar year.
Sales tax.
Yep.
So for the year, we're we're pretty much flat, um, aside from the refund that was issued in prior months. Um, but it is relatively flat compared to the prior year, it's the same thing that other communities are seeing across the state. Um, I'm just happy it's not going down, actually, so we've had exponential growth over the last five years. And so it was bound to uh, flatten out at some point.
And the sewer water revenue, that just reflects that slight change we made.
Yes.
Well, good old sewer revenues up.
Yeah, I can remember we did do a slight rate increase for sewer revenue, and then the water base rate stayed flat. And we just did small increases on the tiered rates, I think we'll we'll see that difference be more significant, of course, as we get into the dryer months.
I tell you, the franchise fee deal was really a great thing, that is really, hats off to y'all. I mean, that's money, you know, that.
Yeah, November's really consistent with last year. It's tight, tight, exactly. Our bank interest, we're starting to lose a little bit as we put capital towards the one oh nine East Main. But still happy that's rolling in for furniture fixtures and.
Equipment.
Equipment. Total permits.
Down in December, that's to be expected.
What about new home building, is it kind of flattened?
So it kind of goes through fits and spurts, right, you have developments that are putting in infrastructure grading and and getting ready to kick off. So total building permits doesn't necessarily show the full picture, we have Park Meadows that is currently working on infrastructure installation. So when they get some lots ready, we'll see those permit numbers kind of kick back up. And then remodels, renovations of the existing.
Renovations is a funny word. Alrighty, inspections, code enforcement, wow.
Code enforcement continues to be really doing a good job. On a couple of things that I got contacted about, so, so appreciated, you know, yeah.
Definitely seems to be the thing I get the most phone calls about is having code enforcement come out and check eggs.
That's probably what a lot of our city staff gets a lot of calls about. Well, we got an app, like we got a a thing on the website, fill it out.
We do, and I care, I don't want to speak on how code enforcement's gonna be displayed, but we will have an opportunity for people to submit that. Um, in a much easier manner than just sending us an email in the future.
Is that a couple of months away?
Um, February or March.
Think we could get like a QR code, I can just text somebody?
Sure.
That'd be awesome.
A link or something, we'll get.
That's good.
Scan this to complete.
I don't know that we'll post code enforcement complaints publicly, especially not at first, I mean, we're not in the code.
It works, it works.
There are, there are a lot of instances where people do not have the means to correct code issues. Um, there are some very genuine people who are doing the best they can and just don't have the means, and we weren't very diligently to partner with organizations. To get those corrected, and so those are the ones that we certainly don't want to put on blast necessarily on the internet that um. That we have something going on, it's too many circumstances or.
But we do have some good community partners that help with those instances. Cause I wouldn't want to kick somebody down with something like that.
Yeah, and and we don't know when those first come in, come in, and a neighbor doesn't always know, or somebody driving by doesn't know, and so I think at first, at least. We will keep those on the private side so that we can see how many we're getting and how that process is working, but they will have opportunities to submit them.
Excellent. Saw the drop in fire response times at your presentation at the chamber, chamber event, that was great.
Can we learn about wastewater treatment?
We did.
Everybody looked at their water on the tables, like.
Mrs. Black keeps the ship heading in the right direction.
I mean, I don't, we have two green stackers who keep it boiling, so, for wastewater than I am at that.
Uh, I was in commissioner's court today with the county, uh, speaking of fire, and I know the fire chief's not here, but uh, the fire marshals. Accepting donations, and accepted one today from Prosperity Bank to get like a Sparky the Dog or something to go around the schools and fire prevention.
Yeah.
And they received a five hundred dollar donation, I think he still needs roughly three thousand. Uh, but that may be something that even here in the city, we could use on fire prevention, where you could come by here, so.
Yeah.
If y'all know anybody interested, donate to that.
Saw that on TV, yeah.
We have a whole firehouse that they bring out for uh, public education, so.
I'm, I've toured five firehouses now and have never seen a dalmatian, I never thought growing up that I would.
Or a pole to slide on, right?
I know, no poles, no dogs.
I think it's against ordinances now, huh?
What, to have a pole?
No, dalmatians.
Not a, not, we don't.
As a, as a police officer, I just look for the lazy boy chair at the fire station, so.
Moving on.
Consumption. Ms. Black, can you show the latest consumption? Is it December?
Mm-hmm, it's not right there.
Okay, okay, okay. It's way down in it, of course, it's winter.
That's right. Right, nobody's watering their yards.
They're using a lot for the pipeline.
Yeah, I don't think they're using enough to make a dent in the way you consume. It'd take a lot of those trucks.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not using very much water, but somehow using more sewer.
I'm just glad my heater bill's not on this chart.
Yeah.
Yeah, all that looks good.
Crumbs does look good.
Where's the uh, where's the speeding indicator? Right there, okay. Okay, thank you. Meals on Wheels is hanging in there.
Yeah, they've actually started delivering frozen meals, they've cut down their number of deliveries and. They're delivering frozen meals, which moved one of our council people to buy somebody a microwave the other day. But uh, yeah, that's, they're kind of making do with what they have, so the East Texas Meals on Wheels has transitioned to frozen meals just because it's cheaper to go that route.
They call me when the ceiling panels fall out.
So when they do the frozen meals, do they deliver more because they can last longer, or is it still the same number of meals, just?
I think it's the same number of meals are just frozen.
Kind of a easy deal, easier.
Yeah, it's just easier logistics, logistics wise to manage it that way. Alright, and that's it. Excellent. Um, council, you also included a uh, financial statement in your packet and a racial full profiling report, we can dig deeper into either one of those if you'd like.
I'll just say this, after being a police officer, reviewing the profile report, we have a very fair, impartial police department that's doing a great job.
It's also available on the website, anybody wants to dig down in the agenda packet, it's there for the whole world to see. Alright, that takes us down to item J, executive session, pursuant to check, chapter five five one, Texas Government Code. The city council reserves the right to convene to executive sessions from time to time deemed necessary during this meeting. So the council may convene into executive session to discuss any of all the following topics, pending or contemplating litigation, or to seek the advice of a city attorney pursuant to section five five. One dot zero seven one, possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to section code five five one. Dot zero seven two, personnel matters pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven four, economic development negotiation pursuant to section five five one dot zero eight seven. We'll be meeting on two services tonight, that will be pursuant to Texas Code, section five five one dot zero seven four. We will convene into executive session to discuss the duties of the city manager related to secondary employment as a part-time adjunct instructor. And number two, pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero eight seven, we'll convene into executive session to discuss possible incentives for an entertainment venue. The time is now six forty-eight, and we will convene into executive session. We're gonna step across the breezeway here, and we will be back as soon as possible.